So I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order if we're ready. Caleb, can I get a roll call, please? Karen, Eric, Johnson, here. Ruby is asking. Payne, here. And Fisher, here. So now we will move on to the approval of the nets. The approval of the net is from December 12th, 2024. I presume you've all had a chance to look at them. If there are no changes, I'll entertain a motion. I'll make that motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
All right, motion's been made by Payne, seconded by Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now it is time for visitor or public comment. If anyone in the audience would like to comment about something that is not on tonight's agenda. Anyone coming on not on the agenda? Shirley, how you doing?
Columbia Springs, 305285, shooting started live and I will represent the applied labor salvation this evening. I would just like to, I know you've all heard me talk about this before, but I would, to talk about public notification. There was a public notice in the March 23rd Daily Genterlight. And the story that was in the 104th issue yesterday. Other than the agenda that came out only two days ago, I haven't seen absolutely nothing about this public hearing tonight. When I looked on the website, it notes that anything of public, of public hearing. There's nothing in the minutes from your last meeting, the minutes that you approved tonight from December. I mean, I didn't understand, you know, that the part of your project that there'd be a public hearing tonight possibly, but there was no mention at the city council meeting, let me know. That there was a public hearing tonight, but the commission and, and the agenda, only as we've harshed apart for years, they generally come in two days before a meeting. And that is hardly enough time for the public at the city council meeting or the planning commission meeting. So I, I'm just filing a little complaint here. But also, I looked at, at the participation plan that you all approved a few months ago. And on May 9th, well, yeah, 24th, May 9th, 24th. Chris Peterson had written an under as soon as on the May 15th. The participation plan also outlines how information will be disseminated to the public such as legal justices social media and through open houses and other meetings. Now, I think that that probably pertains to, you know, the, the the land law that everything looks, I mean, that kind of add, so maybe heavy on this, I'm getting word out to people, but one notable issue of concern that both the public and commission members was how the public is some folks suggested a longer wait time, as some of the documents are long and dense, but where did others suggest that the city deserve to inform people in addition to the traditional media outlets like the 100 I would really, really recommend that, that you work with the city staff who do a much better job of getting word out to the public. And there's two, three, four, five plus Chris of us here tonight and at least two people that are here tonight. I've been doing publicity for the city for five years now. And finally, I brought my notebook up here because I have a poster on the front of it that says, "How to Build a Community." Most of the things listed here are things that we as individuals should turn off your TV, leave your house, know your neighbors, have hot locks, pick up litter. But at the end, it says, "Know that no one is silent, though many are not heard, working to change this." And so I really encourage all of us to work together to that, that people are heard and have a chance to participate in. As you know, it's a hugely critical process, but thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. I appreciate that feedback. We'll work with city staff and make sure that we're communicating appropriately. So people can have the information to get here. I appreciate that, Shirley. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Something that is not on the agenda tonight? Seeing no one, we will move into our public hearing and recommendation. And so tonight, we're going to have a presentation from Wendy, right? And so I will start with a, this will be a public hearing where Wendy is going to present to us. Our board will question, have some comments if we need to, and then after the presentation is done, we will open up a public hearing where anyone in the audience can come up and give some feedback, give some ideas, but what I don't want to do is have hostile interruptions in her presentation. So let's say all of us, like, take some good notes, folks in the audience, take some good notes, and then we can question her later if there's, we need some clarification. But let's mostly let the, let the presentation flow and it will come back later if that works with everybody. With that said, is there anything from staff before we move into a presentation?
No.
All right. Wendy, the floor is yours. And for us here, the commission in the back of this packet should have a copy of the PowerPoint. It's in the, which you all probably saw, but you have the hard copy in front of you if you want to follow along with the mission.
Great. So I'm here for the, yes, my name is Wendy Sullivan. I'm with W X W Consulting. Myself and my team have been working on Columbia Falls Housing Needs Study as kind of a precursor set. And we started this process, I guess, in the last summer, and so we had just presented this study as a draft about a month ago, and so now we're presenting it as the final report. Basically, I was just gonna make that to be clear, whatever you're talking about, already the purpose and methodology of the study. So we've been seeing some highlights, which needs funds, resonating with what you need housing needs, and then potential opportunities you guys can think about moving forward as you do with future study. And then basically, that's that. And so basically, this, this one nation was to be accompanied by an over each week report. And so I'm just gonna be seeing the highlights. Look here, read it. But if there is more information, I'm not going to go into all the numbers, you know, the things forever. But if there's more information or questions you can have, it's in the report, and if it's not, I'm happy to respond. So basically, the purpose of this study was to estimate housing needed by price point in tenure currently and over the next five to 10 years. But the real direction we were given here is to focus on what do people who are living and making their living in this area having jobs really need in terms of health? But the use of the report is really to help shape growth management planning and zoning moving forward to facilitate housing for permanent residents and employees. And so we really hope this information should be used to identify and prioritize data that can provide a lot of show of zoning changes and information. Really understanding how does who you want to be as a community and who you need to be as a community for people living here get incorporated into the outcomes of the planning, moving forward. The information also, and will people apply for grants and funding, which will be important. And then also to help inform strategies and partnership. Basically, what the study is not, it's not a complete study that's all of the facets of housing demand. As you know, you have investors, you have people who are retirees moving here. Second area, the study actually brings out information in a completely different ways. While we do compare information on the county where there's been relative observations or differences between the county, we note that, but the study primarily focuses on the housing needs in a city of Columbia Falls, as well as what we're calling the Columbia Falls area, which is the entire zip code. This is quite a bit larger than just the city, but as you know, housing markets do not start and stop at the municipal boundaries, and you have we'll get into, you know, you've got 54% of your workers in the Columbia Falls area. It's important to understand your place in the valley as well as what So in doing this, when we look at the data, we basically use what we call the three tiers of research. Number one, the public available data, but especially in smaller communities like this, there are limitations to that information. Et cetera. The other important factor is pulling in local data. So we look at assessment records, we look at multiple multiple listing service, sales, you know, local information, planning departments, building, et cetera, the location, what's happening locally. And then primary research through interviews. So we did interviews with realtors, properties, other housing providers in the area, the nonprofit, and property managers, and then for in particular, even surveys of employers in the area to try to understand from their perspective what sort of impact housing optimally in the area to fill current jobs, to provide as your population grows. So these three together, we really call this the way the housing story. Just looking at secondary data, you don't really understand what's happening on the ground, briefly, you die. And so again, the set contacts for the study. When we look at the information, we're, we're laying out affordable price points and where housing is needed on what we call reason why we do this is because this is information that's provided by the and we're going to be looking at trying to address housing in different state brands, which all use this AMI system to lay out where certain funds can be used on this scale. So that's why it's important to understand it in this context. And so basically what this is, is Department of Housing and Urban Development gives a median income 100%. That's considered 50% would earn above that, 50% would be earning below that level. Then extrapolate that median income level to multiple household sizes. In Columbia Falls, your average household size is two and a half persons. So to relay the information according to what the average household can afford and what its middle is, is highlighted, is in blue. That's basically where your average household size falls on the incomes. At the beginning, with some of the future graphs, I'll show the distribution of your population within this And so then, when we're talking about what is affordable in terms of housing to these households, the definition that's commonly used is housing is affordable or attainable. The monthly household housing payment is equal to no more than 30%. Right? Basically, what that means is affordable doesn't mean, it's not just talking about low income. So talking about the ability to afford the housing you're in. And that doesn't affect anyone from earning, the people earning $20 for less than an hour up to people that are earning 100. If you're in housing where you're paying more than 30%, it's not affordable. In Flatland County, Montana, you know, at 100%, so the median that would mean a max rent of about, just about 1,800 and then a maximum purchase price of a home of around 200. And so moving into part two, basically, I want to highlight some of the trends moving forward. And so in a nutshell, these are kind of the three main bullet points of things that I'm going to talk about here in a minute. But the positive thing is that Columbia Falls is still a community for the working class, anyway. And you've historically been that, you have you know, in general, relatively good jobs for, for the region. However, what we know, what we've, what we've noted in the trends is that you also have a growing tourism, tourism economy and related investment interests. And so you're kind of at this pivot point. Things are happening, but then you have to get, if that makes sense. And so it's actually a really good position to be in with the work that you have to do moving forward, because I think you're you're in a preemptive spot. You know, you can figure out who is it that we want to be, what are the investment pressures that are trying to come here, which ones should we like, and which ones should we want to shape to be So I think this presents a new opportunity in that respect. And, you know, since COVID, which is happening everywhere, housing prices are often hot. You know, it's kind of a challenge trend here, which is what we're doing in the housing study. And Columbia Falls is no longer the quote of course, which I'll kind of do talk about. I mean, well, we'll talk about the rents and then where you love the price points with that, but basically you may lose the gap. And then entry level home buyer opportunities are really diminished, families making less. And so I have more information on this. So providing these, all in positive trends and negative trends. Positive trends aligns that we see that, that really, you know, facilitate your continued growth as, you know, sort of a place for people, making their living there to live and thrive and get good jobs. You're still home for the working population compared to other jurisdictions in the county. Which is great. Your economic recovery in it was actually stronger than the county. You were growing and about, jobs were growing. And your economic investment in job growth than before COVID, basically, and if that makes sense. So you have investment coming. And most, a lot of that growth pre-COVID was also in the higher paid jobs, the manufacturing sector. The recent development includes a mix of housing types. Yeah, you have over 70% of your housing stock in the but over the past, I think since 2017, about 80% of the family, so you're, you're providing more of a diversity of housing opportunities for people. Home sale prices have stabilized since COVID, which is good. Fine, which we'll talk about, but at least they're not increasing at 18% a year anymore. Market rate rentals are at what we call a quote healthy 5% vacancy. What that means? When rental vacancy rates were 3% or less, that is a sign of right in rental market, definitely need more and you're going to have prices. Pretty much what we saw during COVID, right? Vacancy rates that get into the double digits is considered high, that's typically a signal to 5% to 7% vacancy is usually a pretty content spot for both vacancy stronger than Kalispell. Kalispell is a 10 up to 15. Mercenaries with local housing organizations are producing attainable products, you know, have a tower, has 18 affordable units. And employers are helping by providing rooms and units, helping with those that responded to the survey, we had, we had businesses representing about 40% of your employment in Columbia Falls here. Starting trends, so these are the ones that we see that are really pointing you a little more toward the tourism, visitor influence, the investing environment influence, and that's a difference between your wages and your home price. The ones defining families with children. So obviously, this is a national issue. However, when we look at Columbia Falls is actually the percentage of that as in the county, it dropped about 3%. In other words, your families are struggling a little bit more than the county on meaning tourism sectors are part of the strong job growth. Creation jobs, lodging, you know, and those are at the housing to help with these lower jobs. Vacation rents and investment buying was up during, since COVID. Just did notice that that flattened a bit when, when they were looking at it's still there, and there is competition for some of the lower priced attached units that the year vacation rentals increased, I think, to 12 licensed by about 83 now. And so and while compared to a lot of communities we've worked in, it's still a relatively low percentage in your community, however, it's something to keep in mind a lot. And if you can get ahead of it and figure out your goals as far entry home buyer opportunities at $400,000 or less. You had, I think it was about city rents are up a lot, and now you're similar to the county average. So the rents used to be 20% more affordable than the county on average, now you're 9%. That's have been increasing at a faster rate, some of these others catch up. There's speculation with all the rentals coming on market that perhaps the older units will sell. 60% of your renters are restricted rentals for families and seniors in the city, so you have lower income households, or we have wait lists. You have very little land left, I think, as of early 2024, you have less than 100 lots. The lack of land combined with low densities and high construction cost basically means only expensive homes to be built. There's only so much to credit. Little jobs, employee turnover, and few applicants. You made it to a lack of housing. The lack of housing that employees can people and they can't live here and like, might have to go elsewhere, so And so just, that's just basically some of our items in a nutshell, you know, what they shoot. And, and this is just looking over the past five years, but home sale and it's been there for a while. It was happening with people way out of proportion after. Pointing out, incomes and wages need to work and buy in your community. So basically, the median sale price of homes was about $317,000 in 20 price last year was $575,000, which is an 85. The income needed to purchase that median sold sale price of home in 20 that's about 233% of the area. Takes about three and, almost three and a half average age is about $52,000 in the city. Well, we've got two adults, one of them needs full time jobs. Well, we've got two adults, one of them needs full-time jobs and the other one needs Looking at your rentals, it's a little, little better, um, you know, when you consider most of your renters are in below eighty percent of the area median income, it kind of puts this a um, most of your, your market rents for the most part are sitting between eighty to a hundred. Studios for a two and a half person household again is for, for a one person household, about seventy-three percent of the, the area. Federalists are about eighty. And then you better do that and go up from there. As noted through, um, interviews and also from the survey that family So what it's all about is we need to understand our present situation before you need to know what you influence trying to tell you, um. But what we do is we sort of try to take a look at what the current shortfall of housing is. So what you need to address current needs. And then what your future needs would be. But with the jobs, your business citizen, what they need and what, and retirees as people retire from positions. So with current housing shortfall, we will do a bunch of different measures here. Um, one, it's unfilled jobs. Um, about eight percent of your jobs were unfilled last fall. Uh, if you were to fill all of those jobs, you would need about two hundred and thirty units to help. For just to commute, the reason why we look at this is because employees that are closer to work, but must live elsewhere to find housing are ones that are more likely to leave their jobs. Because they're not in the situation they want to be. Pretty, um, et cetera, maybe run into other issues, especially, it's especially Anyway, about, uh, fifty-four percent of employees currently commute into their house people who are actually referring to here that are working, already working here. Um, overcrowded households, the reason why we look at this number is because if people are cramming too many people in a home, that's not a sustainable situation. It typically means you need to not a huge need, about fifty units would be needed to being hospitable in households, senior households paying fifty percent or more of their household income or housing costs, so fifteen percent are severely hospitable, um. This building can help here, however, you can also help their So in essence, looking at this, if we add it all at least together, we way overestimate your, your, your need. Et cetera. Um, and so really, we just looked, looked at the, um, force within the overcrowded households here, um, to get an estimate of about jobs, um, yes, that is a need, um, but that's as we look at job growth moving forward, part of that is going to happen when it's the next year's job. But we feel breaking it out like this can be helpful because when you're actually trying to think concerning body care, who should it be, I think it can help, it can help. Um, so the future housing needed, we took a look at job growth. So basically what we did is we took a look at, at what your growth has been over the past two years, extended that for the next five. Let's see how growth is going to drop off, um, quite significantly, um. However, we found that the houses have been very conservative. Um, but that's what we did for the next five years, because we said, okay, well, maybe no one's thinking here. Next five years, this is what the community would like, um. We followed estimates, basically, so, so three hundred and sixty units over the next five years, we could stop the job. Looking at the percentage of jobs that are in Columbia Falls and people are from sixty-five to one hundred and eighty-five units would be needed in the next That is basically if you were to build housing units to fill every single job city, it would be a hundred and eighty-five minutes. If you were going to build to retain existing unique patterns that's working here, you would be at the sixty-five. So if you want to remedy some of this commuting and how employees, um, employers estimated, um, about six percent. That would be equivalent to about, um, a hundred and seventy housing units. Um, however, we do recognize that some employer, some retirees other retirees, yes, are going to sell their home and move, some of them. We could find housing units in the area like three, five, six, eight, nine, ten. So in summary, um, it's just to recap everything. All the housing units needed over the next ten years would be about fourteen. That's about a hundred and forty units per year, right? From four hundred and forty-five to six hundred and fifty, which means you're going to stay for the next ten years, that's fifteen to forty-five to sixty-five units a year. In recent years, you've been building greater about fifty-seven units per year, so because as we, as we see, um, ideally about sixty percent of that would be priced on this slide, and this is looking at the distribution. So we're looking at building units for purchase, um. Currently, about seventy-seven percent of households that own in in the area earn a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year or less. Looking for the home at about five hundred thousand dollars or less. About eighty-three percent of your current listings are above that, they're above. Then we talk about kind of core needs for your employees, um. Days that are here is really where your core need is. And so our blue are the ones, um, that would be kind of where you focus if you were to really focus on the, on your own, it's time to end. Um, that would be whole surprise between about three to four a blue, uh, going up to five hundred thousand. The reason why that's my blue tax product, like townhomes, um, the market can do that. Um, really in incentives or ensuring your zoning allows that to happen. Are people looking to buy there? That's extremely hard to do and really other only organization that can get that low is Hometown. Um, access to the units to go into produce units at that prices. And then looking at rents, um, about fifty-five percent of your renters earned less than sixty-seven dollars a year. Um, about but almost seventy listed or available at price over that. Um, your core need for renters are really in close earning about forty-five thousand dollars or less. You have, you know, like your tax credit project, et cetera, um, the at that more affordable price. Talked about this a little bit, um, you know, understanding the capital gap, you know, what are we talking about when we say global market? Um, through interviews with employers, and this is a point in time, obviously, um. Basically, right now, it costs about five hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars to produce a fifteen, for the single family home. You have labor materials and land, um, which is the most significant for any development, that's about seventy percent of the cost right there, um. Off cost design, which includes engineering, design, but also include your permits, your fees, you know. Honestly, when you look at kind of reducing and developer fee, I kept her relatively one to six hundred percent. Um, honestly, most of the developers are spoken to. Anyway, so at a hundred percent AMI, um, a household would be able to go forward about I'm going to agree with a single family, you know, to produce. That's why too, you need to pay attention to the product that you're going to be producing for. Also the price point you hit, like incentives to try to reduce sale, getting longer than five years. Running down this as well, you may not be Um, and so then, and housing strategies, uh, in the report, we provided, um, several options that you guys can consider moving forward, um, you know. And we like to show that you need to be looking at all of these different segments when you're trying to figure it out. Housing is complicated. There is no silver bullet, there is no one's as we would all have it figured out, we're going to do the next. Media fund, you're out hiring people. Um, partnerships, you have great organizations in the community and you are programs, helping you get people in the homes, you know, how are, you know, for the first ever. Regulations, um, making it happen in, really in that capacity here, but you can use incentives to help it happen. And so really, what's the goal of the housing program? You just want a total scale, you know, you're not going to weigh everything over, you know, on the you just want to equal the balance to ensure that people are making really, you know, still be here given the market. So then, um, I'll just go through these quick and when they figure it, if you want to further step into the question about new, if you can. Um, but under partnerships, you know, obviously looking at public hospital, et cetera, a lot of jurisdictions are probably very successful jurisdictions, especially since mainly housing too, um, just like for humanity, uh, Los Montana can be land trust, who are active in the area and developing some great partnerships, um, to work with. And then the white fish housing authority, I know they're, they're they, um, might be available for technical assistance, um, moving forward, which we did a session today. Um, but at least you have it. And then fun things, um, well, there's some things actually that, um, you're basically using, you know, or getting the new lands have several, um, like ninety or so units already. So retaining those to stay everyone safe, creative homes, um, obviously I've been doing this lately, but most people that end up in the past several years, but they are available. Montana has great resources as well, um, but you can help with housing with those primarily are going to be focused on eighty percent. For the most part though, um, that's going to be focusing on and higher resort tax, you know, even, uh, allocations and some districts already, um, in town, but financing um, and then your general fund, um, the reason why we, we really I already mentioned, the, the federal state programs are limited by the level of, they're if you can find a local source of financing, either through your general fund Yes, we've got a little function, action plan, and feel about it, which, you know, will be. Density bonus, this is one we bring up also. That you need. Density bonus is an incentive tool that is available to you. Recommend that instead of zoning, just flat out zoning, land. Capacity. You use it wisely, say, okay, yes, we can take more. Unless we're getting what we need, which is available. Who are going to give us some attainable housing, then you can get. The same thing goes with the annihilation policy. There's potentially some. Maybe, you know, I know CIP is. Process moving forward, figure out where it is that you want housing and. Help make it happen and make it cheaper for them. And then on location routes, you know, again, as I said before. Regulation standards, wherever they need. Yeah, moving forward, basically using this need assessment, the need assessment. Helps give you a idea of where your needs are, and so moving forward to figure out what I mean, hopefully giving you information, you know, just. Too targeted at, right? Help you frame your needs and goals, goals, help you attract capital.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. If you'd like to sit down for a minute and I'm sure we'll ask some questions and. You can either answer from your sheet, or I guess you probably approach the microphone so we learn better. I'm sure there are plenty of good questions and thoughts from the rest of the committee here. I'm going to start with some very basic ones. I read this whole document, not just the PowerPoint, but the eighty plus pages. I think it's. A great tool. I really appreciate. The clarity and all the bullet points and graphs that are in there to make it simple to understand. So I wanted to. First, make sure I said I really appreciate this document. A simple question for Eric and Justin over there. I've read this entire. Housing study. I read Senate Bill three eighty-two a while ago. Does this satisfy what Senate Bill three eighty-two asks us to do legally?
I believe it does.
Okay.
We kind of set up the proposal. At the beginning to try and address the needs that we need for three eighty-two, so. Really, this is just kind of one of the building blocks of our group of policies, so. Our next, next steps, we do have our RFP or our CIPs for sewer and water. Which will kind of. You know, update those, they're not that old, but it goes up to date, that's required in three eighty-two. And then basically we're in, in the near future, right, we're putting out an RFP for a land planner to start our. Our land planning process and. Kind of to Shirley's point, early on, a big part of that will be the public outreach and trying to find somebody that. Saturday with. You know, Facebook and. Social media portion out there for people that. So, and then that, that process is really where I see us using a lot of that. From the housing study to help us, you know, identify where, where we can grow, you know. Is it infill? Is it annexations? And then. You know, once we kind of get through the land plan. And kind of put the land plan. And have new land use map. We then, as part of three eighty-two, will be renewing our zoning and subdivision regulations to kind of. Up tail in the new processes, but also, you know. Everything you brought up. One of the tools that we could potentially use that we don't currently use is RPU. So right now we have used RPU to look at flexible zoning and kind of neighborhood fitting, but. You know, we, we, we have density bonuses in it, but we don't require anything for it, so we. And, and start building up an incentive package that would be not a ten or fifty percent including areas, only for including area housing. With that density bonus, that would be the mechanism, so. We would comply with state law by not making including area housing mandatory, but we will be providing the incentive package. Where's our, our looking for to actually create some of this. The housing that, that we're missing. Right now and, and hit. So. That's, that's how I see this coming together. And I think the housing strategy or study that was put together. And it helps us meet those intentions.
Okay, great. Appreciate that feedback. Just wanted to make sure that we are still on target. We weren't stepping away in any way, since. This is a great document, but that doesn't necessarily mean it satisfies what evolved, tells us we have to do. So I just wanted to make sure we're on page there moving forward. Then I have one other brief question, then I'll turn it over to your, to your, to the commission. Wendy, when, throughout the study, when you're referring to the Columbia Falls or Columbia Falls area versus the county. And forgive me if I am inarticulate on this. When you say the county, did that pull out Columbia Falls or other cities? That includes every city. Every, every facet of the county, every other city, and includes Columbia Falls as well. Okay, so that's included in it when we say county. Wonderful. I just wanted that clarification. Would anyone else like to ask some questions of Wendy or staff, if it may be?
Hey Wendy, thank you. This is also great. I, I do appreciate it. I've, I've had a couple of people just anecdotally just come up to me and said that they really enjoyed this just in the neighborhood. So I think folks are appreciating this effort. A simple and maybe perhaps simplistic question, but you know, obviously eighty-three percent of all new units are not likely to be affordable. I think we could all agree that and see the reality. Is it, is it too simple to say that, you know, therefore if, let's say, we mean, just again, simple math here, a thousand more affordable, that's, by affordable, I just mean within the correct AMI. That would mean more like five thousand units would be needed within the free market. And that's again, if twenty percent are actually affordable. Because I think that it is important for us to have a more realistic number of units that would actually be required to get the mass aggregate of true affordability. When we're looking at our land use plan, because I would, I wouldn't want us to just be focused on. A magic number that's in this report and say, oh, if we reach that, then maybe we've, we've done our job in terms of our new zoning. Is that a fair way to look at this? Is it more like, you know, multiples of five, six of what the report says?
And Wendy, before you answer, would you mind just stepping up to the microphone so it can be recorded as well as possible? Thank you.
Yeah, so I. That's a tough question. But, but it was, you know, it, 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 no, it absolutely makes sense, the. The housing needed is reporting what is needed by people. Demand from investor buyers, demand from second. If you were a community like the L, I would say yes, it's probably. Because they obviously. They have, you know, only twenty-five percent of their homes below are occupied. Or ninety percent of your homes are occupied as someone. It's, it's a little, I, I get the desire to kind of. Cross the. This point and, and market rate with. But with a total number, I would say actually probably what we've had by the. Market's going to take care of that statement. By saying sixty percent. You know, sixty percent of new build should ideally be priced below the market for. That's not ideal, obviously. You can do through incentives, you know, you can help develop. The objective would be, you know. Then you can start to. I'd say that. You do not need to build five thousand. But to accommodate for. What? Level of the end, you might want to add in ten percent for.
Thank you. That helps just add a little bit of flavor to just what.
Quick question on the last thing. What do you mean when you say like not move up to a full unit, but to move up to a unit that's just below what you said?
Okay, so yeah, so you, you might have people currently now that are in homes that can't.
One more question, and it's probably even more difficult to answer and not really included in this report, but just in evaluating the disparity maybe in what's attainable for rentals versus ownership. Do you have just any anecdotal? Number or just a rough percentage based on your previous experience of? The retention of residents that are essentially restricted to a future of rental only housing versus having a more attainable ownership in the future? Because we see such a disparity, right? And I'm coming from a similar area in Colorado a few years ago, where this was the case. A lot of younger families maybe decided to move away because the future was strictly rentership. Versus actually owning either a townhome or single family product. Is there any kind of rough percentage that you've seen in your experience that, that could help us just again, kind of inform the ratio of rentals to ownership product?
You know, rough percentage, so the number that's jumping into my head, it's not necessarily a percentage, it's more of. So, so in essence, what we've seen is that people. Okay, I'll take the multiple job now, or whatever, I'll do this for. Pay for five years, I mean, they can't move to that next step in that time. That's pretty, very consistently kind of the first point is it's actually. You know, I would, I could probably get you a percentage based on the figures in, but I. Definitely, I mean, and you get to it, you know, what ownership does, so rentals really help people get here, they help fill the. No, okay, do I really want to stay here? And if I do, where is that going to be and where am I going to buy? But I stick it out for five years and some might, you know, some might do it longer, some might do it. But, and then if they can figure it out, you know, they'll. Really, that's really what builds your community, right? People get invested in. And so that's. We, we talk about this whole spectrum of housing being, that's good, we need it all. You need, you need to get people here, you need the first time, an entry. Minutes for people to first move into, you need the, the first time homeowner.
Esther? No, that's another one. That's thank you. Anyone else like to have a whack yet?
I think we're seeing that already with the decline in families with children right now.
Yeah.
We look at that number, we, we see what's happening, because we used to have that, that strong school district, that affordable community that families were coming to.
Yeah, I said anecdotally, just from the schools, we're seeing lower enrollment. Part of that is housing opportunities within our. City boundary or within our school district boundary becoming limited in terms. All right, I'm going to say two kind of questions I was kind of pointing to you. I think that was a, a big one for me for our area is just, yeah, trying to capture. Addressing our housing needs versus. How our houses are being purchased, right? And what that balance is in terms of. You know, I. We kind of look and see what Calisbell's done and it's gone, has really doubled down in the rental market. And now you're telling us ten, fifteen percent occupancy, or ten, fifty percent availability, which is a little high and, and disconcerting. So I think about that, like, we don't want to get into one of the situations where. We're advocating or end or pushing too much of one product segment, but I really appreciate the study, I think. I, I got a chance to like. Go through it, but the detail necessary to kind of like tease out all the numbers and where it's going to take a little bit of time, I did. Certainly helps inform. Our needs within the community. I think, you know, the big one that jumps out to me is just. We have. You know, as a community, we have a high level of dependence workforce that is making. The minimum amount it takes to possibly survive in our community, right? Like, I think that's a, that's a really polarizing thing for me, just to consider like how important that. Part of our workforce is to the viability and the thriving nature of funding boss. And yet, they're struggling to call here home. So, so just to sober you out. And yet, they're struggling to call here home, so it's just a sobering out.
Sorry, I have one more question. Um regarding the S T R market, short term rentals, um. Do we have, and I may have missed it in this, so I apologize, any information about like those occupancy rates, what those typically are, like are are short term rentals hard to book? In general here, or are there um an abundance? Do we know that?
So while we're just studying it all, right, and actually in talking with property managers and others. Honestly, a lot of them said they can do the one, but they can get to four. And it's, you know, short term rental, like I said, the the nice thing is that. Compared to other communities or working is is it's. They can get it, you know, and so I think you're in a good place to be, let's. Figure out what we want to be.
When you guys, when you did look at the available like single family lots that we have in city like something, and maybe it's something we do, we can do here or have done, this carries like. Of those hundred or so units that we have available, how many of them are actually. Buildable lots in the sense like, I know we have a number of single family where homes are either straddling two lots, or they've clearly. That lot has become their yard um with real no intention of making it into another home, so do we have a breakdown of what that is, looks like?
Um, there was, I worked on that to some degree, but it has stated. It tastes a little bit of round truth, I think.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah, it's a fairly intensive, yeah, even for a hundred units would probably be a lot.
So you can just count they in lots, but there's a lot more to that. It's like you said, a lot of lots that are. A lot of lots where. Homeowners and owners, they have no intention of ever selling. There's a possibility that like, there's it's intense ground truth.
Do you, I mean, do you think we'd be out of step to say it's. Of the hundred available single family lots, we're looking at like fifty percent of them are probably sitting in that kind of a situation, or is that a little high? Okay, just a kind of curiosity.
Okay, Wendy, another question kind of off of Justin's here earlier, so with roughly eighty three percent of listings being above the median level. Those houses are selling, do you have a feel of where those buyers are coming from? Who's purchasing those units?
Yeah, well, okay, so so you have. Well, and and we back up a little bit, um when you look at available LPD, that's currently on the market. I don't know what you're saying, you know, like a year, like.
Yeah, gotcha.
Um and so some of them are selling. But that being said, yes, the the seven homeowners primarily are that are buying single family homes or living in seventy and five, um that's the majority market up there. Um, you know. They're there, but for the most part, those are those are going to.
Um if we don't have any thoughts now, we'll move to a public hearing, and then after the public hearing. Um if any other thoughts have come up that the public's, uh well, we can bring that back up to Wendy, discuss a little bit more, and then vote on whether or not. We're going to avoid this um housing incentive to city council. So Wendy, if you'd like to be seated temporarily, so we'll now open a public hearing, um anyone is welcome to come up and give their feedback. Um it's not technically a question and answer session, but you are going to tell us things, you're gonna, I'm sure, question us, and we're probably gonna redirect. Towards Wendy, because we want this information to get out there, but officially, you're coming in, talking to us, and then it redirects straight to Wendy. But with that, um anyone who would like to speak in a public hearing, public hearing is now open. Come forward to the microphone, give us your name, address, and be succinct in your comments, please. Shirley. Not to put you on the spot, but anyone can go, like, surely, surely always has some traction and advice for us, so. And that is a good thing.
Your goal line two eighty five should be started, um I'll speak for the everybody in the association. I am beyond pleased that this housing study has happened. Um. And supporting this motion for at least the last two or three years. Even though I was pretty much aghast at the Senate Bill three eighty two um that at least it provided for housing studies, which. Um, uh as I say, I'm very, very pleased about that. Um. I don't actually have a whole lot to say, um some of my questions have already been answered. But one of my questions who might even go along with what Eric was um talking about earlier as far as. Process goes along and and one, and that that question is. It it sounds like that there will be a land plan um that comes out. And so is that just a redo of the current growth policy? Is that a whole template, a whole movie? Um. To to what that would be, I'm just curious about that. I kept hearing when we say know what we want. You need to know what you want, and um. My uh my question with that is, so how do we find out? What's the process for finding out what we want? Um. Um. I guess finally, I would say that in some of the past meetings that some of us have. Um. And like. People that are, yeah. Other than, you know, employers, um and and. Let me correct it, that that was that kind of a of a survey done, but I'm I'm hearing remnants to that. So I would highly recommend at some time, again, making the public participation, thinking. Listening to the people that live and work here and using Wendy's word. I think that it'd be very important to have some kind of a citizen survey. Um issue, but do that sort of thing on a regular basis and and I will do what I can to make sure people. Um. I think a whole short term rental thing has been a big issue. I like the suggestion here of knowing what you want and. Giving yourselves the authority to regulate that in some way. We can't tell people what to do with their property, but other um. Disciplines do that, so I think that, um your thoughts?
Thank you so much, Shirley. Um before someone else comes to the podium, um Wendy, did you? She was asking about the public interviews, it was beyond just employers, would you like to tell us about anything you did pass that or respond to that a little bit?
Sure, sure, yeah, so we. As part of this process, we did not scope um doing a community survey, um in part. Um and so what we were really trying to do was get the information behind the stories. That being said, through talking with employers, um I mean, we's. But it's that, I mean, they know their employees and they know their stories and they know why they think, they know why they're coming and they know why they're going. So so we, through that, do get, you know, that information, we also have. Of those who are actually doing this, and so we felt, at least for our. That information sufficed for what we needed, um and then when you do. A lot of the white people, you you know the stories, you know people are struggling, you know.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Would anyone else like to speak during this public hearing? I'm seeing no one, are we absolutely certain that no one else would like to speak? With that, we will close the public hearing. So. And uh so just to be clear, um what we will be doing now is we can discuss as we want to. Anything else that's top. We will have a theoretically a motion, a second and a vote on whether to move this. Um housing study onto the city council, where there will be another public hearing, is that correct? And. So if anyone only had a chance to skim this and they really get into the weeds on it, read the whole thing like we all have. And you can come back the next city council meeting, they'll tell us when the date is, and hopefully we publish well in advance, surely, so everyone can see it. Um and so there will be another chance to comment on this.
Just it will be like this.
This is this is me.
I I actually saw that incident.
Um. Perfect, so what I will do is I will ask for a motion, and then let's get a motion, a second, we can discuss. At the general. I would move to uh pass on the housing study as presented. I'll sign that motion. All right, I've got to move my cat tomorrow, second my ping, is there any discussion?
I mean, really, our only other option would be to push it back out, get more information and have it come back in, right, just so we understand.
Yes, yeah, we we could, we we need to do this at some point, but if we thought there were any flaws or anything that was wrong that we didn't feel good about standing on the council, yes, that's. I mean, I feel that, you know, we had our, we had a work workshop on it, um I think. A lot of our comments and thoughts and some of the depth that was contributed to it, and it came back with a more robust. Uh depiction of what we were really looking for um. Again, it's, we've sat here for months and you get some of us years speculating. Right, based off of our own um observations or. What we hear passing at the mailbox, and it's really valuable to have actual numbers here. Um to help start to explain it, and then I think to inform. Inform when we have opportunities to hear from our the residents themselves, I think one component I'll be interested in is. We see what we need, but. What is, what are prospective renters and house homeowners, prospective homeowners? What are they looking to see in the market that's going to keep them here, right? Um is it that three bedroom, two bath, single family detached home, or is are they going to accept townhomes, which. You know, just that, I think that's a critical piece that we'll need to understand in order to really effectively apply what we see here, but um this is a critical. All right, seeing no further discussion, um put this to a vote. Uh Caleb, we say just doing a voice vote or to me a roll call?
I can see it.
Sure, yeah, all right, um all in favor of the of the motion to move this on to the city council? Uh aye, any opposed? None, that's unanimous, so this will move on to city council. And quick question, so our uh next plan commission should be May eighth, we presume we'll have something to do then?
Yeah, I will, and I will not be there for sure, I'm sorry. All right, we will um. Uh have that for humanity as a as a seven lot subdivision, that will be one of the check notes.
Okay.
We gotta do the growth policy and apply some zoning to it. But um fairly straightforward little subdivision, so that's what you'll be looking.
Great, uh seeing there was a business in force, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion, a second? Thank you, everyone, appreciate it.